Yeah.
Hey, it's Bolivar and Washington. So if I can just find one of those, I'll just drop it to the other.
We're calling to meet in order. We'll have an implication by Commissioner Hart.
Um, let's pray. Do we thank you for this day and we thank you for this city. We pray that you would guide us in our decision making tonight and that we would honor you with everything we do and say here in Jesus's name, amen.
Commissioner Mashal? Commissioner Thorne?
Here.
Commissioner Orange?
Here.
Commissioner Max?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Skeen?
Here.
Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Orange?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashal?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
We have a couple of adjustments to the agenda today pertaining to rezoning. PL 1947 has been moved to January the 13th meeting and under subdivisions. PL 1926 Seymour Office Plaza preliminary plan has been withdrawn by the applicant. So the first one we'll have today is PL 1946 request for fence variance to allow an encroachment into the required setback. The subject property is located on the north side of Sunflower Street, east of Washington Street, specifically 436 Sunflower Street. William Lane representing the owner. Mr. Cados, will you please present the planning staff reporting comments?
Yes, sir. As you mentioned, PL 1946, the proposal is going to be beyond the allowable setback at 436 Sunflower Street. William Lane is here tonight to represent his application. On the four pages of staff report, you can see generally where the fence is proposed to be. The green line of your staff report is the building line that's highlighted on that lot and the fence is showing that it comes out to that building line going back in line with the curb and back along the lot. Especially if this would be 25 feet from the... It would be in line with the regs, but the extension of the house goes beyond the allowable. Home is currently under construction and is pouring in towards Sunflower Street. There is legal on the side yard in the open and so that's kind of created the variance is the house 10 foot off the side of the house. I'll read this once for the record tonight, but the next two applications were variance of the staff report or a legal. The special conditions and circumstances exist. We are to land structures and buildings involved in the generally applicable structures in the same district. A little enforcement of provisions would be stated deprived the applicant of rights commonly of other properties within the same district in terms of special conditions and circumstances do not result. Not based on valid considerations. Requested would not be fully on the application. My understanding is this has been submitted to H O A and approved by the developer. Generally what the applicant is claiming is that the orientation of the home and then the shape of the lot is what's necessitated.
Any question, Mr. Cados?
Sir, stop. Not yet.
Yeah, there's just not many houses on that road yet, so.
I guess I'm just asking because it looks like where it comes out, the point of the... The point right there, it looks like it may, if a stop sign's put there, it looks like it may block the view coming around because of the street's rounded, I guess. I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just looking at this picture.
But the fence will sit back 25 foot back of the curb and when the sun is up, so it's positioned, it'll be well part of it.
Okay. I'm just seeing what's on the picture. That's all. It kind of, I don't know.
The home faces southeast. It's going to face south, south, southeast?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already built.
This is where the home is. The green line that's highlighted is the allowable front yard setback. So like Nick said, that'd be good. But we only allow a fence to come 10 foot off.
What he's asking for tonight, the yellow line is generally where the sidewalk is. So this line, we can see my cursor, would be the curb, the 10 foot of green strip and sidewalk, and then the 15 foot coming back of that's additional 15 feet. So just to give you an idea where the fence would be. And the floodplain you see is no longer applicable. That's all been fixed with FEMA and raised and it's just shown for reference on the plat.
Any other questions, Mr. Cados? Would applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
So William Landon, do you want the address of this home or my home address now?
Probably where you are now, I guess.
1110 Greenwich Drive in Hernando. I...
How far, so the allowable is 10 foot off the house and how far we see, I don't see a measure exactly how far you're requesting it to be.
Um, I want to s-
Like how, what's this distance here? It appears to be about 35, 40 feet.
Yeah, because the pool, I over, the pool I said is 15 by 30. The pool's actually smaller than that. I just went with the larger one just to kind of orient, but I think it's... I'll have it, let me see. Looks like approximately 45 to 48 feet. But that section is, is 80 by 120, the side yard is.
But you're wanting to put the fence in front of the house?
No, no, no. The garage extends off the front of the house. I would go back 10 feet from the corner, front corner of the garage, 10 feet back and then out.
I think, I think it's kind of misleading. The green is not where his fence is.
That's right.
That's where he wants to put it though.
No, that's the same.
No.
The fence is right there. Yeah, that confused me at first too. I noticed it afterwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had the same concern, but in, in, that's why I kind of drove over there to see where the stop sign was. And it is a sharper turn, but with it being not on that green line, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, at first I thought it was on the green line, but now I see where it's marked fence. Um, so yeah, I'm guessing you did it this way so it would run, I guess, parallel with Washington Street?
Yes.
Straight? Okay. Yeah. I mean, it would look better that way, so.
Yeah, it will stay parallel. That's my opinion, the pool orientation.
Yes.
And once the pool builder gets in, I'm not a pool builder. I don't know how that works, but he looked at this and said that's about right.
Okay.
That's just, that's the actual building line that they could build out to, they could put a home on that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Anyone in support against this application? All right, is there a motion to approve? Denial table this item.
I make a motion to... A motion to approve a variance to allow an encroachment of a fence into the required setback. The subject property is located on the north side of Sunflower Street, east of Washington Street, specifically 436 Sunflower Street, and as described in the attached exhibits A, B, C, D.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Orange?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashal?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes. The next item is PL 1498 request for variance to the allowable front yard setback for the principal structure. The subject property is located on the north side of Bolivar Lane, east of Washington Street, specifically 432 Bolivar Lane. Civil link representing the owner. Mr. Cados, any commission reporting comments?
Yes, sir. PL 1948, it's a bit louder if y'all can hear that. 1948, the request for variance on the principal structure, front yard setback on the north side of Bolivar Lane, east of Washington, specifically 432 Bolivar. Civil links here tonight representing the owner and the developers also here representing this application. In the discussion portion of this criteria is the same approval or denial criteria as our last application. And this application in general is for the principal structure of the home. It is additional, it's also a corner lot. And if you look on the setback lines here, roughly 5.6 foot encroachment on the northwest side of the lot is what's requested, 19 foot in lieu of the required 25 feet. It's interesting on this application, the previous phases of the subdivision allow for what's called a street side setback, which is for situations like this. The home faces Bolivar Lane or Bolivar Drive. If there's a secondary frontage, the other phases of the subdivision allow for a little bit of encroachment to make this doable. For whatever reason, it wasn't included in that subdivision when we did that final plat, so there's two front yards of 25 foot on this one. So as you can see, it meets it in the front corner, but the orientation of the lot, it narrows as you go north. And so the request is to kick the rear corner of the home out 5.6 feet. And let me zoom out so you can see a little bit overall. So the encroachment would be here. It's accessed off the rear in a private alley, so the city street technically stops here. So this is all privately maintained with their driveways connecting in the rear. So yeah, that's the request, 5.6 feet. I did provide proposed motions to approve, deny, or table in your staff report. And Nick and Johnny are here tonight representing this application, and I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any question, Mr. Cados?
So the front corner, the southwest corner, it's just a foot and a half or 1.5 encroachment?
Yes, sir.
What's that other red line going around the 50? Oh, that just marks off the 15 foot instead of 20?
That's correct. Yes, sir. That's to show if, if there was a 15 foot yard street side setback, then that's where the building would have fit, but it's just not on this section of the plat.
Any other questions, Mr. Cados? Would applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
Nicholas Croonan, representing M and R Builders, 3629 College Road, South Haven, Mississippi. Be glad to ask you questions y'all may have.
Question for the applicant?
No, thank y'all.
I do have one question. Is there going to, I mean, is, are we going to see any more lots like this in this subdivision? That something could be changed instead of variance every time on all these lots?
So this is the only one in this phase. The 15 foot street side setback is something that we're going to explore in future phases to make sure it's in there, just hitting part of this section. So the previous section had it in there. I think there was maybe one or two lots that needed it like this, but just this is the only lot in this phase that should have this problem.
How many more phases you got?
A lot. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know.
That's why I didn't know if it was something like Austin said is normally in most, most of it just wasn't in this one. That's a good question. Look at it in the future.
We were going to do that if there was going to be more than just a couple, but I think this might be the only one in this section we need it for. So since this is the only one, me and Austin talked about in the future phases, making it a thing where it'll be part of all future final plats going forward.
Thank you.
Yep, thank y'all.
Anyone against this item or support this item? All right, is there a motion to approve or deny table this item?
I make a motion to approve.
Go ahead. Who's got it?
Go ahead. I make a motion to approve the variance to the allowable front yard setback for the principal structure. The subject property is located on the north side of Bolivar Lane, east of Washington Street, specifically 432 Bolivar Lane, as described in the attached exhibits A through D.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Orange?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashal?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes. The next item pertaining to subdivision is PL 1945 Garrison Lumen Second, Garrison Lumen Two Lot Subdivision. Request for final subdivision of two lots on four acres. The subject property is located on the west side of Timber Lane, north of Robertson Street, join Garrison representing the owner. Mr. Cados, present the planning staff reporting comments.
Yes, sir. This is PL 1945, and the request is for a two lot subdivision on 3.81 acres. Right now, it's a single lot on 3.81 acres. The existing zoning is R12, which would allow for a 12,000 square foot lot. The current proposal is well above that as it's only proposed to be divided in half into a three acre lot and a one acre lot. Both lots do have frontage onto Timber Lane, but as you'll see on the final plat, there is a shaded area, which is an ingress egress easement. They propose to share a driveway, which is similar to the other homes on that section of Timber because it's quite a connection to connect over the ditch that's there. So the proposal is to do a single driveway, but they will be responsible for the curved other sidewalk of that little bit of frontage. But that's the purpose of that ingress egress easement is to share a driveway for the one acre lot and the three acre lot. There is frontage on Robertson Gen Road, but no access as proposed. There's some pretty major topography issues going back to that portion of the property. And there is a missing build on that property, but all connections are proposed to come onto Timber Lane.
In the proposed motion, I did include nine conditions, which just cover our standards of the new criteria for improvements required for Timber Lane, which would just basically be their driveway. And the required setbacks are in your staff report there, but there should be no problem meeting those. This is well above the required 12,000 square foot for just the two lots on the 3.8 acres. I did provide a proposed motion in your staff report, and this does go in front of the board next meeting on the 16th with y'all's recommendation. So I'm available if you've got any questions.
He said 3.8, and these are saying, one's saying three and one's, I know it's almost four. I didn't know if that is like going to be a problem or...
It may be a dedication to right of way.
Probably that, probably that shared easement. Oh, I see what you're saying.
GIS is full group law. Let me pull it real quick just to make sure. But it's, the plat shows a three acre and a one acre lot.
I'm semi-familiar with this. Um, someone told me there, is there a cemetery somewhere near this property or connecting or?
The cemetery is, is on the back of one of the lots, maybe 2145 below that. It's on the back of one of those. It's kind of up the hill.
Okay.
Now, there may be another, there could be another cemetery on that lot, but there is a cemetery.
Is there, I know-
If that's the one you're referring to.
I know in the past, is it going to like mess with any sort of entrance or how people get to the cemetery?
It's right up here.
Okay.
It's up in this hill right here, about these trees.
Yeah, I think it's at the rear of the lots that are currently already flat in Timber Lane. They had to account for that in the previous plat that John Stevenson did.
You can see it.
It's for the dedication right of way. So GIS has it reflected, but it didn't reflect any of the right of way dedication of Robertson Road. I think we ran into that with Shay's application.
This is, I'm still trying to figure out.
On Timber, so I think that's probably the discrepancy in the acreage.
Is that, I'm still, so the red area you got highlighted, this is the area, the lot in question?
That's correct.
That's what this drawing is throwing me off because it says this is Robinson's, this is Robertson Road right here, which is right up against the lot now. Yeah, that's what's throwing me off.
The axis is pretty narrow, especially on Timber Lane.
Oh, Robertson Road is over here.
Yep.
Now Robertson Street. Okay, I see. There it is. So it comes off Robertson Road, not Robertson Street.
What are the, what are the sizes, what's the size of the house on the one acre lot?
There, I don't have any middle script, which is on the lot.
I-
I can answer that because it's my house. It's be about 2,000 square on one acre lot.
On the one acre lot?
First we'd heard of a cemetery. Can you show me on there where?
It's back here.
It's right up that hill right there in the corner.
And we're going to get you to come up here in one sec.
I'm not inside, but, oh, I'm sorry.
You'll be in it one sec.
Not on you, it's on the neighbor.
Any other questions, Mr. Cados?
Yeah, so the, the one acre lot, the easement, that's going to come off Timber Lane?
Both lots will be proposed to come off the Timber. The, the ingress egress easement that you see is because the one, I'm not sure who's going to cross who, but wants the driveway, but either shares driveway. And so for power of the future, they're both going to share a driveway to Timber Lane.
Which is the case on most of those houses on that street anyways, right?
At the very rear of this.
I was, I was at the meeting when they, when they first, it was proposed, all those were sharing driveways, right?
I understand, yes.
And then it changed.
Reportedly down here rumored to be, but the headstone's up there now.
And it's very expensive to draw, so they're proposing to share. So the purpose of the ingress egress easement is, I believe everyone's going to be related.
Yeah. So it shouldn't be a problem.
If it went, if ever not related, ingress egress, access to both lots.
Okay.
So there's no access up to Robertson Road then on the other side, the west side?
There's none proposed. There's a huge hill going up that.
Probably a good thing, it's right in that curve.
Any other questions, Mr. Cados? Would applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
I'm Deborah Alman. I'm at 47 Doe Creek Trail here in Hernando.
Now you can finish what you were saying.
Well, I just wanted to make sure the cemetery wasn't on our property because I know that can kind of impact construction and that sort of thing, so. But y'all guaranteed me it's not, so that's good.
I think it's on the back of that 2145, isn't it?
Back on the hill.
Good.
So you said, are both houses the same size? I guess it doesn't matter because-
No, um, our daughter and son-in-law have four children, so they're building much larger than we are.
Okay. There's no restraints. I know there's a minimum, right?
So some subdivisions, the large subdivisions that have like design standards, will establish minimum home spurt footage. On smaller, like two lots like this, they're typically not.
Okay.
But none, there's none proposed on this one.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? There are motion to approve, deny, or table this item.
I make a motion to grant final plat approval for the Garrison Alman Two Lot Subdivision, Two Lots on 3.81 Acres, located on the west side of Timber Lane, north side of Robertson Street, based upon finding that the submitted final plat generally conforms to the approved preliminary plan of the land development and generally meets the city requirements codes and ordinances. Subject to the following conditions, 1 through 9.
Second.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Orange?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Mashal?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
Motion to approve this item passes. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of the comprehensive plan presentation from Mr. Bob.
Yes, sir. So Bob's here tonight, and I appreciate everyone's patience. It's been a crazy 60 days, but we've got the plan. Everyone's got a copy of it. I hope you had some, at least preliminary time to review. Bob's here tonight to go over how we got here, the contents of the plan, and hopefully answer any questions you guys have before we move it to the next step of advertising and public hearing for the Board of Aldermen. So I'm going to let Bob take it away.
Great. Commissioners, good evening. Am I okay? Is, is this the right distance to speak and use this computer?
Absolutely. You got the clicker to advance it now if you'd like, or you can-
All right. So, um, yeah, thanks for your attention tonight on this particular matter. I'm before, I've been before you three or four times over the past year and before a couple of you for the first time. So let me do an introduction. I'm Bob Barber. I'm with Orion Planning and Design. I live on Getwell Road just outside of Hernando. Our group, Hernando Planning and Design, is a city planning. We do city planning, we do private development design, we do specialized studies, and I have several partners. We're scattered across the country. Our practice is really nationwide. We've got projects going now from Hawaii all the way over to Knoxville, Tennessee. So we're, we're spread out and we're broad. I had a wonderful number of years serving the city as planning director, and that's been 15 years ago. But that was some, some highlights of my working life was with the city of Hernando. So that's who I am, and I have partners. We have been engaged and were engaged to look at your 2000 and, your planning process that took place in 2019. There was another group engaged to produce a comprehensive plan, and unfortunately, it occurred during the pandemic, and it was tripped up by a number of pandemic circumstances. Didn't quite receive the public input that was desired, and there were some other issues. And the city asked us to take the document that was produced in 2019, if you'll pull that one up real quick just as a reminder, 2019, 2020, and that's, that's where we started. That's the initial comprehensive plan effort from there. Take that document and essentially gave us four tasks to do to improve what, what we had here. One was to improve the-
You go through the years or the old?
No, yeah, put it on mine now.
Got you.
Improve the background data and analysis. Uh, improve the background data and analysis. Um, and uh, the second task was to improve and increase the public engagement. And so we have broader exposure to the plan, and engage the planning commission at a deeper level. The third task was to refine the future development map and the place types, you'll see place types there, make them better, fit Hernando better, uh, fit the, the goals of Hernando better. And that was part of task two, was refine the planning goals, and then the fourth task was to um, uh, create a more coherent implementation strategy at the end of the document. So if you'll allow me about ten or fifteen minutes, I'm just gonna scroll through and show you what we have done. Uh, and what is uh, different, and we believe far improved, and will be more effective for planning in Hernando. So uh, as you look at this document, first thing we did was rebrand it, we're not calling it a comprehensive plan, it's, is the Herna- Hernando Horizon. It is a comprehensive plan, but we rebranded it to Hernando Horizons twenty forty-five. Um, and uh, the document is, this red line won't go into the screen, that's okay. You can see the way the plan is organized, uh, in the table of contents, there's a context and approach, and then we have the existing conditions, that's the background analysis. And then our engagement process, and then the core of the future, the forward-looking part of the plan is uh, uh, begins in uh, chapter four, the city plan itself, and then there's an implementation component in the end. So um, the document uh, follows along, again, beginning, the very first part is the background information, or the discovery uh, information, uh, and I don't know if you have your printed copies or not, but if you're gonna reference them later, if you don't have them. Uh, you'll see the history of the city is highlighted, the growth of the city over time, uh, all of that background information, and uh, how the project was approached, which was a discovery, uh, and then a visioning process, and then planning, and then implementation. So as we look through the plan, again, highlights of Hernando history, and then we go into the data, just the quantitative data for Hernando. Uh, the analysis related to the natural environment, all that is cataloged and illustrated, and conclusions drawn with regard to the natural environment in Hernando and its implications for future development. So you'll see soil maps there, flood maps, uh, tree canopy uh, maps, everything related to natural environment and the analysis there. And as we move forward, we will begin to uh, get into the development patterns themselves. Uh, and this uh, particular section will call out existing land uses, that map that you're looking at is uh, that's some of the vacant areas in Hernando, subject to development in the future. Uh, we went through all the existing land use, created a new existing land use, there were a number of errors and miscategorizations, so that's upgraded. And uh, we use the existing land use to understand future development patterns, and how do you want to plan these vacant areas, so the map you're looking at here, uh, you will see uh, the, the black, the very dark black areas, those are vacant developable parcels. And then you will see aerial um, map along the I two sixty-nine corridor, uh, where you can see the actual ground itself from an aerial map, all those are agricultural areas, subject to future development, so the question for Hernando, growing as it is, obviously, is how do you want the future of the city to grow, and how will it be shaped? I won't go into the detail on the numbers here, but all that is quantified, and we begin to uh, arrive at a build-out analysis and a development potential for the community, and that'll pop back up again when you see the engagement in just a moment. Uh, further factual data is the mobility system in Hernando, the mobility network, we look at not only the streets, roads, but also sidewalks and pathways, uh, and greenways, uh, that's cataloged, uh, and understood where the pinch points are, where traffic flows, et cetera. And then the community facilities uh, are cataloged there, uh, flowing into finally local economy, and then some of the policies at work in Hernando now. Uh, and that forms the factual basis for Hernando. Uh, population, land use, economic data, that is the, the statistical uh, component, or the statistical makeup of the community, quantitative. So then we go into visioning, this is the second task, uh, the visioning part of it, uh, being the qualitative. So we, we understand what the community is statistically, how do you want the community to grow going forward, is the question. And so we do this through our engagement uh, section, now you, this will be in twenty nineteen. Uh, in twenty twenty, you will see public input, and you'll see a photo there, and everybody's spread out, and uh, they had to meet outside, and all the stuff that we had to do during the pandemic. Uh, A plus for effort, or E plus for effort, uh, maybe not so much on gleaning the best information out of that. So what we did is we followed that with um, a um, uh, two things to get public engagement, one was a community-wide survey, uh, which we got multiple hundreds of responses, and we asked about Hernando, so you, you all should have taken the survey, I hope you did. Um, and then we also uh, engaged in a workshop, y'all were present in our workshop, where we um, projected growth going forward, uh, and then we actually was a Lego exercise, uh, to your, uh, a nod to you, uh, Lego man. Uh, where we kind of formed how we would want the city to grow in terms of future mixed-use developments, single-family developments, commercial developments, and so forth. The result of all, the result of all that is, I wanna find my planning principles, Austin, can you blow up that survey on the lower right? The result of all of that work were these key planning principles, and they're important, and I hope the planning commission will sit with them a minute, because this came out of the survey in the workshop. Preserving green space was the highest rated component in, of all the inputs that we got. Preserving green space, open space, environmentally sensitive lands, enhancing environmental quality, very important. Uh, the second one there was uh, uh, leveraging existing community assets, that means things like the key parks, how can they be uh, leveraged, and when I say that, how can they be protected, expanded? The historic resources, the institutional resources that Hernando has, uh, supporting those and leveraging them for quality of life. You'll see number three there, vibrant walkable neighborhoods, walkability in the community is, from our work across the country, it is close to the number one factor in a quality community, is walkability, bikeability, and um, uh, not just moving cars, just very important, that kind of amenity, parks and recreation. That shows up in the survey as a desire, or in the results. Uh, a range of housing options, um, uh, that's being met some now, in some of your newer developments, like Delta Landing, but not just a community of single-family homes, because it will not be a vibrant community for long, without a mix of housing choice. That shows up, mixing the land use, pedestrian-friendly, high-quality development, strong sense of place, meaning the form and design and the character of what you approve is exceedingly important in the ongoing viability of Hernando. Uh, more adequate recreation, uh, transportation alternatives, certainly economic development opportunities in Hernando, at which uh, also focuses on the small entrepreneur, or the local entrepreneur, not just what comes in from outside, and being very, very cautious about how any kind of massive data center type development might, uh, the community might be faced with. And then finally, uh, make sure policies and processes uh, address all that. So you can squeeze it back down, I wanna spend a moment on that, because really, the, the plan itself flows out of those principles, and so uh, when we go forward, this was the, this was the exercise we did, where we laid out that future in a set of team maps, and we had, you can look at it in your plan, and there's some of the photographs for, uh, for it, in my, is that?
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes, please, please.
You said, um, a mix of different homes would be best, I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, say like a, like a single-person house, how that would bring value to the community, I mean, I, I know, I mean, if one person is living in a house, technically, a single person is not gonna like bring much to Hernando, they're probably gonna leave and go to Memphis, and do single-people things, and they're, like, Hernando's more a family-oriented town, city.
That's right, and when I, so, for instance, um, uh, I think, uh, the, I guess the best example I could think of that you're constructing now is probably the Delta Landing development, with a mix of uses and a variety of housing types, so when you're attracting uh, a workforce of uh, firefighters and teachers and families of that nature, you wanna be able to accommodate them in the community, uh, along with all the other folks, and, and so generally speaking, a, offering a variety of housing options in the right balance is a more healthy community than one single kind of product, one hundred percent. Does that make?
Yeah.
Answer that?
When you say it as, when you, when you said the right balance.
The right balance, yes.
Okay.
Most, most assuredly the right, that has to be balanced well, and it has to be monitored well. Uh, okay, so then the fourth task was then, or the third task was then refining the place types, and we do that here in the plan itself, this is a future land use map that Austin uh, and your staff will use, and you all will use when evaluating uh, future development proposals. Is it plan compliant, can it be accommodated? Uh, if not, you know, what modifications can be made? So you'll see on the right hand, on the left-hand side, the place types that we have, a lot of suburban kind of development, but there's also a mixed-use category there, uh, uh, town center, the employment areas, all of that, it's not zoning, but it is the basis for zoning code and zoning decisions. Uh, and won't dwell on going through each of these place types, but one thing we added into uh, these place types was, there was no density factors included in the last plan, so we've allocated the appropriate density, so you can judge your zoning cases better. But we go through all of that to give, not just a red color on the map, but also the character, the intended character of the development, and you'll see this is very high-quality uh, kind of development, uh, design shown in the plan, and all of that is within the, within the place types. All right, um, the, uh, following behind the place type is the mobility component, where we mapped the future roadways, some of which are already under construction, such as the extension of Commerce Street. And uh, try to get future roadways and future greenways mapped, and um, you'll see street configurations with an emphasis on complete streets, meaning new streets that are constructed, and uh, uh, accommodate uh, not only cars, but also sidewalks, and uh, street trees are an emphasis here, are an ideal uh, to establish, and you'll see the cross-sections in the plan to apply as streets get constructed. And then uh, we pay a little bit of attention to utilities, and um, some, uh, some little deeper community design factors. Nesbit was called out as a focus area for, a, a, a real candidate for redevelopment, kind of a community node. Uh, so that's there, um. And then we come to the last task, which was increasing, uh, establishing a more robust implementation. So the way, this is the way we do implementation, we present it uh, as a set of strategies, and in fact, I'm probably getting off of YouTube if nobody can hear me now, but uh, as you'll see, the strategies are organized under those planning principles that we went on just a moment ago, so as you, you'll see, preserve open space and environmentally sensitive lands. Well, how do you do that, what should the city be looking at in terms of policy, projects, and procedures? And they'll be listed under that principle. Uh, ma- maximizing, uh, leveraging community assets, you see that. All those principles have a set of strategies. Now, a lot of those strategies are um, associated with uh, policies. It's very important, in our view, that once you adopt the plan, get it like you want it, comment on it, uh, but it's very important that the zoning code be aligned with the vision that's set out in the plan, so a recommended next step here will be assessing your current zoning code, which hadn't been really touched in fifteen years, uh, to see if it does adequately uh, um, address environmental components. Does it adequately provide for high-quality um, development of a mixed-use nature, or, and then if not, how does it need to be adjusted? There are, that's not the only policy, there are other things here, looking at the historic overlay district, uh, looking at um, other elements um, associated with, with that, so, and there are some projects in, uh, along with that as well. Uh, for instance, expanding uh, uh, trail system in Hernando is suggested here, recommended. Uh, understand that's money, and it has to be budgeted, and et cetera, but for a long-term vision, that needs to be planned for, and expanded in Hernando. So, I hope I took my ten or, I'm sure I took my ten, I hope I didn't take over twenty, that, that was to provide the overview of what we've done, present it, Mr. Chairman, to the commission, you have your draft. Uh, it's subject to your comments, once you're satisfied. Uh, recommendation to uh, to the Board of Aldermen, uh, for, for movement. The plan then uh, becomes the, it, it is required by law uh, to um, form the basis, or serve as the basis for all your development activity in the city, from a public standpoint, so. That's the role it serves. That, uh, once it is adopted, it will update, I think the existing plan was twenty-ten, or twenty-fifteen, or eighteen years ago, so you're, that's what you're updating from.
Question, Mr. Barber?
I took a survey like, it was like a year ago, is that the survey you're talking about?
It was, uh, we put that survey out, it would have been late spring, it would, it would have been.
Eight and a month, eight or nine months ago.
Yeah, we started, we started about January of last year, started in earnest about January of last year, we had the survey out in, when did we have it out?
We had to re-advertise it two or three times to get our responses up, so it was up for until most of summer.
Quite frankly.
And then we held the exercise in late summer, early fall.
Yeah. And by the way, in the, when you look at the plan, the survey results are in the plan, verbatim, so you can see what people said.
How many respondents did we get, total?
Two, two oh two, or two oh five, something to that nature.
Not enough.
We could, we could add more, we got enough to be um, confident in what we were saying uh, in this, in the sample, but we always.
I just mean as far as like, you know, you probably get more people complaining than, than.
Than being, taking a part in it.
Yeah.
That is true.
Like, hey, don't complain, take the survey and.
Yeah.
But, that's just.
And, and also, another uh, recommendation here is to look at the, take a look at the plan every five years, you know, we don't wait ten, fifteen, there's no reason you, that survey can't be popped out every two or three years for inputs and adjustments.
The change in the built environment that triggered kind of Bob getting engaged between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four was night and day, I mean, with the high school and the major, major land use changes we had had.
Yeah.
It took a pretty major update to get to where we're at today, and honestly, even in the course of the public input stage of the last few months, like Commerce is getting punched through.
Yeah.
And Sweeney's been connected, and like major transportation shifts have happened, so.
Are you talking down there by Walmart, Commerce being punched, okay.
Yeah.
Are you talking down there by Walmart? Commerce being punched? Okay. That's what I thought, but. So how much is different from what currently exists to, to what's proposed, I guess? Is it like, you're saying it's like night and day?
We're pretty, now we're caught up. Like, we've gotten, the zoning changes in the last twelve months are reflected in the proposed development maps you'll see in there. So what you see now is pretty caught up, but to his point about every five years, we're growing so fast, it could be every two years. We can really...
It won't be caught up long.
I wanna say it was last meeting, Alderman Miller mentioned something about that they were currently looking at changing some zoning. Is that to match with whatever the, this plan is?
I'm not familiar with...
I think what he was talking about at the last meeting were two uses.
He just mentioned that they were looking at stuff and changing, and talking about changing stuff. I didn't know if it had, 'cause to be honest with you, you can implement this, but unless you change the zoning, it's just like a waste of time.
That's exactly right.
That, a hundred percent. So, so in the implementation piece here, it's gonna recommend that the zoning code be evaluated against the plan.
That was my question. So the next step is to recommend this for approval, or are we still offering suggestions?
Either. I mean, it's up to y'all. It's an open book. I don't plan to rush this to the board. So if you make a recommendation tonight and you have something in the next few weeks, just shoot it to me, 'cause I plan to include anything and everything to the board for feedback.
But then after that, that's when we move towards looking at the zoning?
Right.
And go through the same process?
That's right. And so just for an exact example of what that would mean is, like, if you guys wanted, and the subdivision regulations, like how we physically build our subdivisions, if this comp plan recommended that these roads have a trail on them, then we might implement something in the subregs of how to build it physically. Like, is it an eight-foot trail? And if that's the case, what's that right-of-way limit? And...
Street skates.
All that. And if, I know it's a lot to kind of take in tonight, but if you look at some of the zoning ordinances from cities like Hattiesburg or Franklin or other cities that are similarly-sized-ish, not like a metropolis, they're huge, just because when you really start looking at a comp plan of trying to consider everything that's happening and how to do it, there's a lot to do. And so ours is, needs an update by a lot.
Well, yeah, we, I mean, we've talked about it several times in different meetings throughout the year about the ambiguity and the vagueness of some of the zoning. We're making decisions based on what we see today, but not really being able to see how's that impacted right here.
Absolutely. And the other side of that is it can be cumbersome for...
And, Mr. Barber, let me ask this real quickly. Is there a finite amount of time for review? Because I do think we ought to have that. I think there ought to be an amount of time that we have to, you know, correct.
I would suggest, you know, thirty days is standard. If you wanted to do sixty, I wouldn't take you more than sixty, unless you just had an overwhelming reason to do so. But thirty days is pretty standard, if that's adequate time, forty-five.
And thirty days would get us still in the middle of January, so that's reasonable for our board to, to get this thing done.
I think that would, I mean, I think that would be reasonable.
So we make, so you're suggesting is, we study and make a motion at a January meeting?
Absolutely, yeah. And if you have anything in the meantime, like questions, or if you wanna sit down and go through it or whatever, we're available. So we'll make this as collaborative as possible.
Sure.
And for the newer commissioners, that's probably, now, we've had it for months, but like I said, it's getting it so good.
Correct. And I mean, I'm a little, little bit familiar with the old one. Bob, we worked on that together for three or four years. And, yeah, but I do think we ought to have a, you know, a small amount of time to kind of review.
Is this, is this version changed since the last one you sent?
Has not.
Does anybody need a copy? Any additional copies for anybody?
I, I'd like to have a different one.
We've got several. We'll get you...
I've got one, yes.
It's a, I see a letter-size format there.
I got you.
This is produced in eleven-by-seventeen tabloids, so...
It'd be much easier to read.
Kevin, I can get you one. I got one.
Now, I don't have one that size, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we planned, so once it's adopted, right now, we're doing eight-and-a-half-by-elevens for review. And then once everyone's good and it gets adopted by the board, we're gonna do a printing binder contract and get the professional printing of probably like fifty or so, so everybody gets a copy.
The electronic review of it may be the better. On the PDF, you can scroll it and zoom it.
I'd like to have that.
Yeah.
Bob quoted us for the printing, but we decided to skip it.
You know, it's all, a lot of it's electronic now.
Guess we're gonna table this, make a motion to table it till...
Fine with me.
I don't know if it was official.
Make a motion to do that, or do we wanna...? Yeah, I'd make a motion that we table this for thirty days, review it, and then at that time, make a decision.
Can you be here? I mean...
I would, I hope to be here.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that's good, and then that way we can come to you with questions.
I do too.
January thirteenth.
Okay, we got the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Thor.
Aye.
Commissioner Newsom.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Aye.
Commissioner Orange.
Aye.
Commissioner Max.
Aye.
Commissioner Mashaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen.
Aye.
The motion to table this item passes, we are discussing it at the end of our meeting in January.
Merry Christmas, David.
Merry Christmas.
Let's adjourn.
Let's adjourn.